Good evening. I would like to call to order the, wow, the October meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution, stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I apologize that evidently the microphone has a lot of gain set right now, so hopefully that doesn't blast people out of here. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman, we do not.
Thank you. Any, well, your motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve it, the gentleman?
Second. All in favor? All right, motion carries. Anyone look to the minutes? Are there any corrections or changes? We'll entertain a motion to approve that as well.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second. All in favor? Aye. The minutes are approved. Thank you. We do not have any other presentations. Is there any public comment not dealing with the town center tonight? Just general comments? Okay, if you would like to go over to the microphone and it works better for the record? And if you could just state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Sandy Dwork. I live at 11221 Jeremiah Street. My husband is a representative of the HOA. He's the VP for that particular community, our community. And mine is minor, what we're asking. Since the events have occurred, we have had a lot more, as you have, a lot more bumps and things with more cars and things coming in the community. So what we had experienced during 4th of July was a lot of outrage from our neighborhood. We had a lot of cars that were parked in front of people's neighbors' actual driveways, in their lawns, just anywhere. So it became a real bothersome situation. So since then, my husband and the rest of the HOA board have instilled some towing processes for our, for our community. We just want, we, we are in awe of what's going to be happening. We, we love the idea of the new growth. Obviously with growth, you're going to have your bumps and your bruises. And we just would like, if we could, for some reason, one of the speed bumps on Jeremiah was lifted up. We have one, but the other one was lifted up and is no longer there. So to help with that particular traffic flow, that seems to be, it's probably going to be more busier than ever, we have had cars that zoom through that neighborhood. And for a safety feature, we would like that, if that speed bump, if possible by the city, put back in for the safety of the community. And just to keep parking a priority, because in the neighborhood that we have, we have 81 homes. So with that said, we only have less than 40 parking areas for our community. So, so some people have to, you know, have two vehicles, three vehicles. It becomes a cumbersome problem. So we just want you to keep in mind, with all of the growth that's going around those particular townhomes that are projected to be there, Jeremiah is already having difficulties with, with parking. That's what, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, well definitely, I'm sure that we'll take that into advisement. Have you spoken with the, the Town Public Works Department?
Several emails had been presented, and we just thought, if we could be direct.
Right, unfortunately.
That would be.
This board can't do too much about those day-to-day activities. We're, we're thinking more forward, so we can definitely incorporate that into what we're thinking.
Okay.
But we just, we don't have the power in this board to do, I think Public Works would help a little bit more.
We have, we have tried the process. We're just trying to project some of the issues that we are experiencing right here in the community as it exists.
Something to think about, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, are you going to follow up or?
Yes, I've made some notes as well, and we could follow up with other staff.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. So we have no old business. We can move on to the town center phase one. Would you like to open the public comment now or after the presentation?
I think it'd be fine to open it now if that's something the PCB wants to do, but would ask that you allow Planning Manager Lawson to give his presentation and take questions and comments after the presentation.
True, right. I just didn't know if you wanted to have any, let's do the presentation first.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. All right, so, good evening Planning Board, Planning and Zoning Board. Tonight, we're going to be, begin presenting on the Town Center Phase One Main Street Plan Development. There's a lot of information in these slides. There's a lot of information that, that wasn't even included in the slides, so I'm going to try to get through it the best I can. If you have any questions along the way about the process, the timing, why this is happening now, and specifics about the plan development, please stop me and let me know. I want to also note that SING Development representatives are in the crowds tonight. If you have questions for them after I present. There's also plenty of town staff here which can represent both the, the plan development and the zoning portion of this, but also the separate development services agreement that the town has proposed to enter into, should you have questions about that process. That's a separate process that the board's not hearing or acting on tonight, but it is, it is something that's related to this item. So I'll, I'll be speaking specifically to the rezoning through a plan development. All right, so the first few slides just cover the location, what the request is, and where this is. So you can see that it's directly behind the town center campus, or the town hall campus, and it's split into three blocks, blocks A, B, and C. It's centered around the roundabout and the existing Marshall County Library. The land is currently either undeveloped, has a single-family home on it, or had one at one time, is the library, is the healthy food hub, or is parking for any of those uses. Just more general information about the property itself. It's a little over 16 acres. It's already annexed. And then there's, there's plenty of pens. I couldn't fit them in here, but if you look in the, the agreement itself, it'll list all the properties and the addresses and the parcel numbers. Moving on, a little more background about the area. You can see the zoning around it. So the, the phase one is outlining this red line here. I've drawn, everything that's in that teal green is currently zoned a main street. Zoning, main street is different from the man, main street plan development. Essentially, a plan development is a specific set of UDO requirements that is written by the applicant that is, is kind of negotiated with the town. The, there are two plan developments currently in town. One is Park West Village. So it's a, it's a little atypical to normal standard development that would follow typical zoning rules. And then there's another one on aviation that is, is undeveloped. So surrounding this development, mostly residential, we have high-density residential, some low-density residential, and then the town offices. Okay, so I'm going to speak a little bit about the background of a, of a town center and relate it back to the 2021 Land Use Plan. So the 2021 Land Use Plan identified a, a series of land uses and preferred uses within those designated land use districts. As you see on your screen here, everything in the orange is designated as town center. And so the background of the town center is that Morrisville developed in a way that there was never truly that traditional downtown, the way someplace, a place like, like Cary or Apex has. In the town center, has been long thought about and meant to accomplish the development of a, of a traditional downtown and community center that Marshall never had. So this is just a series of snips that I took from the Land Use Plan itself. It shows the preferred uses, the goals, and then a lot of key considerations, which is probably a little too small to read. But i- in general, it basically says that along Carolina Street, this is supposed to be the, the main street that you think of or any small downtown or small town. It's supposed to include a mix of uses, including retail, restaurants, commercial space, and then mixed-use development, primarily vertical mixed-use with residential on top. It also mentions, in, in the preferred uses, that parks and open space and then institutional and civic uses are, are preferred for this area. So I'll keep going. This is another snip from the Land Use Plan. This is directly from the sub-area plan for the town center. So the, the Land Use Plan designated this area as town center, and then within the Land Use Plan, there was a sub-area plan which discussed in more detail the needs for, for a downtown. And again, it says primarily the things I just said in the last slide. Essentially, there was never that downtown core that, that most small towns have, and that primarily along Carolina Street between Town Hall Drive and Church Street, that's supposed to be the main street. That's, that's going to be the, the typical stretch with some small retail, vertical mixed-use. And so tonight, we're talking about phase one, which just includes its first three blocks, but eventually I think the vision is for all Carolina Street to have future phases. And then the last slide from the Town Center Subarea Plan, this was a visualization, visualization. Page left is north, so this is, the bottom is Town Hall Drive. You can see the roundabout here. The library is built currently, and then this was the general vision for phase one. I didn't, it was hard to mark off the exact boundaries with the angle, but this area here where my mouse is, that's where the town green is currently proposed instead of these buildings. This is where the mixed-use building that contains retail and residential. And then this general area where you can kind of see my mouse, that's block B. And block B and this rezoning is currently unprogrammed. It will require a future amendment, but that's generally the area we're talking about tonight from the 2021 Land Use Plan. All right, I'll keep moving. So we've got kind of the history and the location. Now let's talk about, what is a plan development? Why is it not a rezoning? And then what does all this mean? And what action is the board requested to take? So it, it's a main street plan development, and it's different from a rezoning in the sense that a conditional rezoning that this board would hear, there'd be maybe maximum of 10 conditions, and they'd be very specific items specific to the property itself, but still overall adherent to the zoning district itself. Plan development's a little different. The way the UDO is set up, there are a few things that the plan development still has to do that any other development would have to. So included in that is like parkland dedication. Still has to follow the same rules every, every other development. But it gives a lot of flexibility in terms of designing a unique development, in terms of adjusting setbacks, adjusting building height, different types of road cross-sections that we'll get into, so not just maybe a standard road with a five-foot sidewalk, but different kinds of sidewalks, and, and a lot of unique things like that. And so SING Development has proposed that, has worked with town staff for probably around half a year, six months at this point, kind of going back and forth about what does the Land Use Plan recommend, what is the best use for this land? And, and that's what a plan development is, and sometimes I describe it as a mini UDO. So within the ordinance, there's about a 35-page document that has all the development standards outlined, and that's what the plan development is. And again, the, the, really the, the best example of plan development in Marshall today is, is Park West Village. I mean, that was done back in, probably 10 years ago, this point, 2013. Okay, so, all the words I just said, what does that look like on the ground? This is the sketch plan. I'll zoom in if, if it's easier. But again, there's three blocks, and we'll start with block A. And then to help orient you, here's the roundabout, and this is Town Hall Drive. Down the middle is Carolina Street, and then the top is Jeremiah. And so north is generally top of the page. So let's start with block A again. I'll zoom in a little bit. So block A generally is going to be your mixed-use building. This is next to the library. It contains mixed-use here, which is your, your non-residential space, and the rest of it is going to be more aimed at multifamily. It's going to be a structured parking garage in the middle. It is wrapped, meaning that when you drive by, you're not going to immediately see a, a parking garage of some, the way you do in some cities where you know you're driving past a parking garage. Block B is going to be submitted at a future date. Again, the programming is not necessarily set for block B yet. So this same process will have to occur before any development occurs in block B. And then block C is, in, in event lawn, park space, plaza area, generally it, it's been kind of commonly referred to as the town green. So that, that will be an area for towns, the town to host events, any number of events. And then it, it's really designed to host those, and it has a stage, has parking, has other things like that. And I'll get into more detail with each block as I move on. Okay. I'll zoom back out a second. So included in a plan development, each zoning district has a long list of uses that you, you can, can do in that district. The plan development requires that the applicant propose specific uses to create, again, its own zoning district, its own mini UDO. That list is before you here. I won't read them all, but 38, 38 principal uses, and then there's also 28 accessory uses. So the difference between the principal and accessory use, there, there's a few of, you know, things that separate them, but essentially it, it, it's kind of straightforward. Principal use is the main use of that property, and accessory uses can come alongside that. So if you have any questions about these, be happy to come back to this slide. Okay, so next I'll get into the, more, more of the standards that are proposed by SING. And these are, would deviate from the typical standards that are set by the UDO, but really are honed in on this development. And I'll try not to read right off the page, but I don't know if there's another way to really go about it. But essentially, the net lot area, so you see block A and block C. So block A is the one that has the mixed-use development, the large building, so the, the lot size is a little larger, 20,000 square feet. That's a little less than half an acre. And then block C has the 1,200 square feet. Now it's a lot smaller. And, and that's really to allow for some of the, and I, I think I missed mentioning this, the retail cottage, cottage retail, which are, are small retail buildings that aren't necessarily designed the way a typical retail building's built, with a parking lot next to it, a drive-through. It's more designed for pedestrian-friendly activity. Maximum building height, 75 feet. None of the buildings in the zoning now are proposed to go necessarily that high. That's just the, the set of standard that can, that SING could work within. And then maximum setbacks. So with most zoning, it's designed to spread everything out, keep uses apart, keep your neighbor apart. In the town center, the thinking is the opposite. We want to kind of develop that true urban-ish kind of space, bring things together, so there are no maximum setbacks, or no minimum setbacks. And then there are a few maximum setbacks. So typically, there aren't no such thing as a maximum setback, but again, in a, in a downtown area, you want to keep buildings closer to the road, so it feels walkable, it feels connected, and then that's the reason for that. And then finally, at the bottom, I want to highlight, especially with, with the speaker earlier, they propose 785 spaces. Within that 785 spaces, there are specific numbers of spaces proposed for each block. These include the structured parking unit. These include public parking along the road. And then it includes a parking lot, which will also be built, a service, a service lot that'll be built near block, the, the block with the town green on it, it'll have service parking for people to use. All right, just going to continue through some of the deviated standards. Again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Essentially, the UDO has certain standards set out for intersection spacing, so that, you know, your intersections are set far apart, your, your driveways are set far apart, so that cars can safely maneuver through, through them. Again, due to the nature of kind of trying to keep things more compact, more walkable, and more dense, they've been, the, the spacing standards have been reduced, and you can see these on this slide and the next slide. And so, same thing here. A couple of things I'll point out is, there, roadways in Marshall have different classifications. Thoroughfare, collector, and local roads. A thoroughfare would be your Town Hall Drive. The collector would be Church Street, and then a local road would be, you know, anything that's non, not a major road. So like, you, you turn into your house off a local road. Okay, so here's the slides that they get in a little more detail about each block itself. So block A, what are the uses proposed? We have 215 multifamily units, some retail space, a plaza space, and then the structured parking, which contains 524 spaces. Now notice, the library is also here. There, most of, about half their existing parking lot is going to be removed and replaced. The parking, the library will have part, spaces within the structured parking unit, and then this part of their parking lot will remain. You'll find, you'll see later on, there's a list of conditions proposed. One of them is that SING will work with the library to facilitate usage of the library while the building's under construction. All right, so we're going to stick on block A, and this deals with the uses. So you see in the dark, in the darker red is the primary frontage. That's going to be your ground floor, non-residential. That's going to be what makes the mixed-use space. That's going to be what makes the, the Carolina Street feel more like your main street in a, in a small, in a small town. The secondary frontage can also have non-residential space, but that's where residential space would be allowed on the ground floor also. Okay, I'll keep going. So here's just an image of what the building on block A could look like, the multifamily, or the mixed-use building. And the reason it's separated between the yellow and the orange on the right is that part of the building is really more aimed towards multifamily and designing for multifamily, and then part of it's really aimed more for that retail and retail space. So the right is the one that's more aimed towards that retail, and there's different building design requirements that have been proposed for these. On the bottom here are just conceptual images that have been submitted by SING in terms of kind of, you know, what they're thinking the building might look like, but I'll, I'll point to my footnote here at the bottom, which says that, that is not necessarily what, exactly what the building's going to look like or, or required to look like. Any questions up to this point?
Sure. Do you want to try to delve into questions now, or do you want to wait until?
I just want to check in, and so I don't talk for, for an hour, and you guys have been thinking I missed something. I'm happy to.
You want to take a little bit, all right, let's, let's see if anyone has any questions. Yeah, well, what's happened so far, yeah. Go ahead, Ray.
On your, on your multifamily, just a question. In regards to the mixed square footage on the units, I know, noticed that people refer to it as one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. But on an average square footage, and if you have 524 parking units in that garage, if there's roughly, with a visitor or whatever, two, about 400 or something, 500 is going to be for the multifamily, and the residual would be for just parking for?
Yeah, and there's a breakdown. I'll need to skim through the agreement to remember exactly how it's broken down, but, but some of those are dedicated towards the public, some are dedicated towards the library, and then some are dedicated for the multifamily development. And as far as the tip, the unit numbers for each bedroom, I'm not sure that SING might know more the answer to that if, if they have the chances be. But I'm not sure.
Thank you.
The only question I had on this area was around, I think it was slide 10, and then earlier in the document, there was utilization of block C, and on one document it said there was zero dwellings, and on this presentation it said that, under the selections, the, go back, page 10. Yes, so principal uses, so you have dwellings on five, six, and seven, and then in the text document it said block C did not permit dwellings. So it was just a question of where you were headed.
That's right. So block C, yeah. So, yeah, so block C here is split off, and that land is going to be dedicated to the town as a town-owned park space. So it's not going to have a, any residential in block C. The, the residential in this rezoning tonight is all going to be in block A, and that, that's it for now.
Because it did say earlier in the other section, in the text section, that it, I don't know if it was a typo, but it had the dwellings listed as well for block A and block C. I understand what you're saying. I just wanted.
No, I'm, I'm familiar. I, I'll look back at that. I remember reading it and thinking that was an allowance, but not, not necessarily proposed with this.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure.
The only question I have is about there not being any minimum setbacks. Does that apply to the residential areas as well?
Yeah, so essentially, yeah, all, all around the, the blue area here on your screen where the multifamily is, along Town Hall, Jeremiah, and Fox above, yeah.
I'm just concerned, is there a safety issue involved there somewhere?
In terms of like cars driving past and things like that.
I mean, I'm sure there'll be traffic calming measures on those roads.
Sure, and really, the, the biggest road is Town Hall Drive. If you see this highlighted area where my mouse is following, that's the Dominion Gassiesment, so the building's going to have to be pushed back on Town Hall Drive at farthest anyways.
My main question of these materials, so you were saying like those pictures could be what it is. But I noticed in the text that it talks about like durable materials such as fiber cement siding, and it allows the fiber cement to come all the way down to the ground. And that may be in a further thing, I may be jumping ahead, I can't remember. So I, I guess what we wouldn't want would be all fiber cement all over the whole building, all the way down to the ground.
Sure.
Especially with all these photos showing us definitely not that. So I mean, at some point, is that going to be codified into the document?
So, I mean. Yeah, and I actually had one extra slide I didn't get to on that block A, and, and that would have maybe advanced your question. So essentially, to, to the purposes, based on any building in Morrisville, there has to be a brick, a three-foot brick skirting around the bottom to set that bottom edge of the building. Here, I believe SING, SING's architects have proposed to allow a diversity of materials, and that would allow some of those to come all the way down where they normally wouldn't, to kind of give a unique feature to the building. These buildings do have to meet a certain minimum of the predominant materials we already have, such as brick. So it, it's not going to entirely be fiber cement siding.
I, I just, that was the only thing that was specifically mentioned. It's, I know, this is really an overview, and it's not the actual document, but I, just, thank you.
No, that's, that's excellent question. I, I can't remember the exact proposal, but it's at least 30% brick, and then there's a combination of three primary materials, makes 75%.
All right, thank you. You can continue, I think.
Thanks. Okay, so let's move on to block B. This is probably the easiest one. Currently unprogrammed, and it will require the same exact rezoning process that's happening tonight for block B. It's just not programmed at this time. Block C, th- this one is, again, where the, the town green is proposed. It's going to have the event lawn, the stage, cottage retail, and, and plaza space. It's also got some water, water features, and then this is a public art piece that got cut off here, but it's also got an educational garden, and then the stage. So the, this is, the, the theme behind this is this is where the town will have those big gathering events. You know, for instance, the last real big town event I, I attended was the July 3rd celebration. It was on Town Hall Drive. It would be shifted here if this rezoning was approved, rather than being on the road itself. The only other differences, you can see there's additional on-street parking back here in the orange, and then currently where the parking lot here is, that entrance will be moved slightly to the left. You'll also see a long Town Hall Drive itself. There's kind of a blue line that runs here. So if you think of Town Hall Drive behind you, there's two lanes, and then one goes straight into the roundabout, one goes directly right into Carolina Street. Now it's caused a slip lane. To help increase that, that safety and slow cars down, that slip lane would be completely eliminated, and then portion of Town Hall Drive, the right lane itself, will be converted into parallel parking. And so that's all to give additional parking spots, public parking spots, but it's also to help keep that traffic moving slower rather than speeding through this area. And then you'll also see here the, the crosswalk proposed on Town Hall Drive where the current greenway is. Okay, oh, and I missed, let me, setback. And then the other feature that I keep forgetting to mention, cottage retail. And that's, that's to be in coordination with this public gathering space. Again, the cottage retail is a typical retail, built in Marshall is going to have to have a big parking lot, probably have a drive-through, probably have all these other features. Cottage retail is not going to have that necessarily directly next to it, and it's going to be designed for more of a pedestrian-friendly environment. I believe I have examples of cottage retail around the region. If not, SING has also provided some that they could run through. Okay, and so basically, this slide covers the architectural standards. So for So for a building, like I was describing, it's a little different than a typical building that's built. It's gotta have a public-facing facade on all four sides. Um and then it's gonna have, the, the, his first bullet point here basically says it's gonna have more glass than a typical building would. Um typically in Mooresville, we don't count glazing or fenestration or windows as a pr- predominant material by itself. It is taken out of the predominant, non-predominant calculation. In this case, it will be counted as a predominant material um in- included in the, in the facade calculations. Additionally, wood can be used. Typically don't see wood on many buildings. This might be the only case I'm aware of in, in Mooresville. Um but it's clarified in the document that it has to be uh in an area that's protected from ease of vandalism. And there's also language that the wood would have to be replaced or repaired if it was vandalized. And then the, the same things we talked about earlier, that three-foot uh skirting is not required on these buildings. Oh, perfect, here's my slide. Um here's some examples of cottage retail and these are from around the area. So the, the top two you see are, um these are from Fenton and Cary. Uh and then you can see my red arrow here, it points to kind of, you see how small these buildings are and how there's, there's drivelines around them and then public kind of gathering spaces between them. And then the, the one on the, the bottom here, this is in Raleigh. Uh and again, it, it's hard to see cause there's a shadow, but it's a small coffee shop. This is uh right off Hillsborough Street in Raleigh. Okay. Alright, so uh another thing I mentioned earlier that's different than the typical zoning is that um unique cross-sections for streets can be proposed. So if you're unfamiliar with a cross-section, essentially it shows uh how many lanes a road has to have, what kind of median has to have, what kind of sidewalks or bike lanes, off-street park, bike lanes, uh how wide the overall right-of-way has to be and, and all those good things. So um Sing has proposed a, a series of unique cross-sections which um are designed for more of that. Again, that downtown feel, larger walkways, um larger off-street bike paths and, and things like that. And so the main one is, is Carolina Street. And Carolina Street runs between Town Hall Drive to Church Street. Um it is split into two sections right now. So Section A is gonna be fully developed with Town Center Phase One. It's between the town green and the mixed-use building. And it per, and it, it'll also contain um besides just the road and the sidewalks, it'll have a dedicated bike lane. And so if you think about where we are in Mooresville, running north and south on each side of this building, there are two major greenways or future greenways. And this will provide that, that biking connection between those two greenways. Um so it'll run right down Carolina Street, right down the future, you know, proposed main street of Mooresville. And it also has some, some seating areas. Um so you can see the total cross-section here on the bottom right. The far left over here is proposed uh private space for along that retail and, and restaurant area of the mixed-use building. So that can allow for outdoor dining, outdoor seating areas and things like that. Okay, this is the next section of Carolina Street. So this is a little further down, closer to Church Street. This full area might not get built out with the first phase because um not all the property has been acquired at this point to, to continue it. Um and again, it continues that east-west connection between the Sawmill Creek Greenway and the Indian Creek Greenway. It also provides again more outdoor seating areas and sidewalks. Okay, so this is the next cross-section, another, another key one for this development. It is Foxglove Drive Extension. So Foxglove Drive currently comes off Jeremiah up here, comes down and it connects with, with Carolina Street right, right near the library. And it's gonna be continued down and wraparound and come um and then connect to Town Hall Drive. So it'll connect Jeremiah all the way down to Town Hall Drive. And this one's a little different because it's, it's utilizing a, a no curb kind of option uh which will allow uh more ease of pedestrian access. Um people that, that walking won't have that curb necessarily to trip on or, or, you know, accidentally. Um it also allows for uh, tends to be set up and, and just kind of like, essentially the, the no curb option allows for more like special events um setting up for, for different, different events like that. So that's Foxglove uh in that area. There's a further section of Foxglove which will connect to Town Hall Drive. This is really designed to limit a lot of through traffic. So if we're gonna have a section of Foxglove that allows for the special events, a lot of pedestrians um kinda wanna discourage having anybody use that as through traffic all the time so we can have plenty of special events, plenty of um, you know, uh outdoor sales setup, things like that. But, but again, this is the small portion, it touches uh Town Hall Drive. It serves as a parking lot to the building that, that planning, engineering and inspections uses. And the only other difference is there's a, currently a, a four-way, a full access out of that parking lot on the Town Hall Drive. It'll be converted so that you're not able to take a left out. So the, the connection now is being moved closer to the roundabout. Site visibility is a um, gonna be worse off when that happens. So we're, we're not gonna be able to take a left turn out of it. If you'd wanna come out of here, you gotta take a right turn, hit the roundabout, then come back.
Just one question, I see this street here, where's the bike lanes established? How, how are you incorporating this?
Sure, that's a great question. So for something like Foxglove itself, there's not necessarily a dedicated bike lane, really the, the.
That's a road.
Sure. Yeah, i- it's a great question. So this right here, it's kinda hard to see, that's where the dedicated bike lane is. So the far outside is a sidewalk, middle's a bike lane. Sure.
I'll just do another little quick round of questions, because I have a couple. I don't know if anyone else does about what we've gone over so far. If not, we can certainly wait till the end, I don't wanna jump on anybody. Okay, alright, well, I, I hold much.
Sorry, thank you. Uh it's just a few more streets here to get through and, and this is a, if we, we zoom back out, there's a new street that's gonna connect Jeremiah to Carolina Street. It's not named, um it's a standard cross-section that just has sidewalks on each side, similar to the current existing Foxglove Drive next to the library. Again, this is part of Block B, which will be reviewed at a, at a later uh date. And then I believe there's just one more, yeah, one more cross-section. This focuses on Town Hall Drive. And so this is um probably the, the biggest change to an existing street. So again, if, if you were to take a right out of this building here and head north on Town Hall Drive, you'd have two lanes. One would end going straight into the roundabout where you could take any option. The other one would end uh where you're forced into turning into Carolina Street and, and the future town, town center. Uh so that, that right turn, that, that's known as a slip lane, that's gonna be eliminated. And the first thought of that was like that, that ease of vehicular speed kinda just hitting that slip lane and going right into the town center where, where hopefully there's gonna be people walking, biking and other things. So that's gonna be eliminated and that's, that's kind of up here if you follow my mouse. Further back, there is a blue line that has uh, it shows where your right lane would be converted into parallel parking. Again, that's, that's more for the, the parking next to the park space, the education center, the events and, and items like that. The other feature of, of how in parallel parking is instead of two lanes, you're going down to one lane um to help control that, that driver's speed. Um and so you can see on the right, this is your Town Hall cross-section proposed. So there was a right turn lane here somewhere, or right lane, it'll be eliminated and converted into parallel parking.
Has there been any thought to doing this on both sides of Town Hall? I mean, cause you're still gonna have the expressway going on the other side and probably people still communicating across.
It's a great question, I, that has not been discussed to my knowledge. Alright, so I, I keep going. We're getting back to just the general, um, I think things the, the board might be more used to seeing from some typical rezonings, which are conditions. So this uh rezoning will have a planned development narrative, which I'm holding my hand. Then in addition to that, there will be an ordinance that has specific conditions for this phase of, of Town Center. So um I, I won't necessarily read all of them, but I will point out a few things and kinda maybe try to explain why. Because this is a, a rezoning that also the town is involved with through a development services agreement and a development agreement, there are a couple of conditions that, like uh number two here, that basically says, we don't know all of the public streetscape materials and design features that are desired by a town council or the town. But through this condition, we're gonna say that uh Sing Development's gonna continue to work with the town to pick out, pick out things. So this is an ongoing process. Um so you'll see a few conditions that are, that are like that. Again, same thing with like number four, the design and location of on-street loading areas. That's again to, to continue that partnership as, as the site's built out and really allow for the town to pick its preferred options uh for, for various things. What else, okay, number five, I'll highlight this one also. So any residential development in town either dedicates space for Parkland or provides uh Parkland payment alue. Due to the development agreement, that, I, I should've mentioned this much earlier. The town owns most of this land and is part of this partnership with Sing. Sing is gonna acquire some of it for, for their development and then the town's gonna repay the rest, the rest for the town green. And so what's gonna be remaining over after common open space and other features is roughly a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of Parkland payment alue that Sing will still own the town, owe the town. And I say approximately, cause uh the, the number is mostly set, but depending on the exact acreages and stuff, when, when we get to it, we'll uh, we'll know more of a specific number. But roughly a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Okay, so this covers, condition six, it covers Block B. Like I said earlier, it'll have to come back through this board and town council before any development happens. Um and this, this condition just guarantees that. And then um ju- just a few other things here. But, but, but Chairman, just go back to your question. So prior to, so after the rezoning happens, the site plan and construction plan had to be submitted. I, I forgot about this condition until we got here. Sing's gonna have to present this, what the building's gonna look like uh to the town council, um so council can review the building. And then lastly, wanna highlight, Sing's gonna work with the library to, to help keep the library functioning during development. Alright, a few more slides. So, so your town staff recommends approval of this main street plan development for a few reasons. The first two deal with, or all three deal with the twenty-twenty-one land use plan. Basically, the land use plan um calls for a town center, it calls for a central public gathering space. Um and this Phase One, Town Center Phase One will, will initiate implementation of that vision. And then you have your action items, should you feel like you wa- want to take action tonight. Um if you want additional information or any other items, I can come back, gather information and come back at, at your next meeting. I'll remind you that, that Sing is here tonight should you have any additional questions and then I am happy to take uh additional questions.
Okay, thank you. So do we, I, I guess, let's do a round of questions. And then I was gonna have a public comment, unless, uh, uh, let's do a comment. Is there anyone here that would like to give a public comment based on the presentation for the, the main street? Thank you. If, if you would, please come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Susan Nguyen, twelve sixteen Forestville Lane. I'm concerned about Block A. There are gonna be a hundred and twenty-five second, two and three-bedroom apartments. I assume they're apartments and not condos. And that means a lot of kids. Right now, we're having issues with overcrowded schools. Um my kid's going to Parkside. I live in the Providence Place area and every three or five years, we get displaced, we get sent to a different school. So basically, a kid, if they start at school in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen-ish, by the time they graduate K to fifth grade, they've gone to three different schools without moving us to a single home. Uh well, without moving anywhere, staying in the same house. So that's an issue. I know you guys do talk to the school board and they say, a- and discuss, hey, how are we gonna place, where are we gonna put these kids? And I thank you for that. However, that's not stopping our communities of, you know, they're fifteen, seventeen, eighteen years old from being displaced for these newer communities. It's disruptive and it's destabilizing our communities. I am in favor of everything you're doing, one hundred percent. But don't forget the, don't forget the people who already live here. We're being disrupted, we're feeling unheard. Satish Garamelli came to my neighborhood just this weekend and he said that the planning board is talking to this, to the zoning board and the sentiment is, is a joke, it's not happening. It, that's the sen- I know that's not reality, but that's what our community is feeling. And we've been fighting for ourselves to stay in the same school. Every three or five years, my community is fighting because we're on the edge of like three different school, uh school territories. We're getting sent off to this school and that school. So when you talk to the school board, please not, don't just ask them, make sure you have a place for these kids. Make sure you're not destabilizing and, and um moving around the current neighborhoods. That's all, thank you. And just for the record, I think you guys are doing an amazing job planning the town and I thank you for it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? And we'll, we are going to, we're not going to vote on some next week, next meeting. So there'll be time to discuss and come back as well.
My name's Mike Work, I live in Orna, one-one-two-two-one Jeremiah Street. Um I have a question regarding Block B, the proposed road. Is that gonna connect into Chaco Berry or is that going to basically come into like the cars, lights right into somebody's town that already lives in Jeremiah?
I may have to defer to Chris, I, I don't know if that road is even planned exactly right now.
So I don't know if I'm gonna have a map that really shows what's right there.
You said that Carolina Street was going to have to connect to Jeremiah and the road currently was under.
Yeah.
Cause we have a street already there for like Foxglove goes into our subdivision, so that just continued. And I just didn't know if the road was gonna come out, what's gonna be on the other side. We, we have Chaco Berry in our subdivision, it's gonna come straight across to connect Jeremiah to Carolina Street.
I, I can't tell and I don't wanna tell you yes, but maybe we can talk afterward, I'm gonna look up.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay.
Hi, uh, my name is Sorav, I'm from three-one-three Carolina Street. I just got to see this thing over the last few days and I really appreciate what you're doing. I think the idea's amazing. Do, do that, the town gets a downtown. Block C, uh totally supported and thank you for Chris Lawson, I think, uh for what you're doing. We have a change few miles, I think I got a little bit of flavor of what's happening. So I'm also representing a few of our residents in our community who share similar thoughts or amorata. We have concerns about Block A. Especially the, I think it's one forty you said, how many is residential in sort of two fifty? That's a significant number itself, right? Uh and, and it's a multi, uh like I'm sure it's gonna be a vertical, vertical structures and all. We do not have anything nearby that high and, and too, too dense packing of families, people, resources and all. Uh that will definitely uh cause spilling of traffic, people and all. Our streets are already so narrow that they are safety hazards. I moved to Carolina Streets uh three, four months back. And, and Carolina Street is, is an offshoot, like, you know, uh, uh to the Thornbury community. It, it is, it's a bypass lane to Town, uh Town Hall. But it is a hazardous street because everybody uses it like a thoroughfare uh and, and they're going through at very high speeds. And it's a safety hazards for our families, our kids especially, right? When anybody who passes through at fifty miles, sixty miles per hour, right? Uh for that matter, I have logged a lot of case requests to the town already. Lot of people in our community, so that's, that's another issue. But this will aggravate the entire situation further. So we have to think through it, lot of traffic, lot of crowd, schools impacted. We live in a community which is green, which is um, uh, uh pretty well-maintained. This will put undue, undue pressure, cut your, you will clear up the entire green buffer you have next to the Mooresville library, the, the library. So overcrowding, clearing of the tree buffer, what you have um and, and undue pressures on resources, schooling, roads, everything, safety hazards. Something we have to think through a little bit. That's, that's our concern. And, and if at all you wanna continue, how will you address the concerns I just raised? So that, that's.
And for the record, could you state your address, just so she'll have?
Saurav Prasad, 313 Carolina Street.
So you're in the Thornberry?
Yes, just across, yeah.
Thank you.
So I also want to make sure that you're recording a minute, that we have logged multiple requests to install speed bumps on Carolina Street. Almost for the last one hour, we have been raising, we have been coming here in person to get those actions. So please, if you could look after that, that's something we feel is really concerning. We are living in a constant fear that some other agency will be hit by these speeding vehicles who just passed through.
Thanks. Any further?
Sandy Dwork. I just wanted clarification on, is it Block A? That is designated to apartments, or was it condos?
I believe it'd be for rental, if I correct, yeah.
For rental, for apartments?
Thank you. Anyone, any further comment? Seeing no more, I will go ahead and close the public comment for this session. Thank you. So any questions? No, I'll say, make sure the mics are on so that Brooke can hear everyone. They were off today for some reason.
Chairman, before the board deliberates, if I could just note, this is a lot of information to present. It's, plan developments tend to be more complex projects, and it's a very high-profile, important project for the town. Therefore, we have designed the ability with this process for two meetings with the Planning and Zoning Board, and I would encourage you to take advantage of that, to allow yourselves the time to absorb the material as well as the public. And that would allow for additional public comment at the next meeting as well, for anyone that might not be here and, you know, watching the presentation at home as well.
Yeah, I agree, that would be wise. I do believe we should still at least have some, you know, our discussion. Rick, any other?
Just have two things I have a question, Chris, or Michelle, whatever. In regards to the examples, some, somebody physically, some people can see visually what they're talking about in regards to apartments and some cannot. If we're taking a look at 200, what, how many apartments? 215 apartments? Close to that area, what's the apartment content on McCrimmon and Church Street on the corner there, roughly? I know it's more than 215, but roughly what's that?
Trail sign?
Right by, right across from the TOD?
Yeah, that's, what's it, Broadstone Trail Side. I don't have that exact number, but it's significantly more than 215. It's probably high 300s. That's something I'd have to look up and bring back next time.
Just to give some people an idea of what that would look like on that. And the other thing, which is a point I've had from past histories, does the planning department share the plans, whether it's conceptuals or MYLARS, to the planning of the school district to give them an idea and a concept of, for their purposes? I know it's off point, but I know what that's going through districting, but.
So we do a yearly check-in with the school system and provide them all the information that we know is on the way. And that projection goes out multiple years. I believe it goes out to 10 years, maybe a little longer. We meet with the school district every year, talk about all the development coming along. We don't share like a MYLAR or final plat or anything like that from this necessarily, but we do, we do keep them updated through the process.
I had a question, I'll have two questions. The first one was around public recreation, so it was on page 14 of the document of the UDO, section 5.5.2. I was just trying to understand, there was a percentage of public recreation, and I wanted to know if that was included? If they put recreation inside the building, or did that mean the grass area? Is that over and above having open lawn space?
You said page 14 of this document. So, yeah, and I actually don't think I did a very good job explaining this, the background of this a little bit. So the town has acquired, the town has acquired all this land over a number of years. And through this partnership with Sing, some of the land is being transferred to Sing, some of it is being kept by the town, and Sing is building all of these, all these things. So there's different kind of pools of money that are going into this development. So with the Parkland payment alue, a lot of this park space is being dedicated back to the town through some of these agreements, but not all of the land can be accomplished. So, or can be, not all the requirements are being dedicated through all the agreements. So that remaining money, so there's no more Parkland to dedicate, I guess, so they have to pay the payment alue. That's where that number's coming from. Does that answer that question? I'm reading the document.
It is. Well, it was 5.5.2, and there was something else about the public recreation. So if that's what it meant, that's fine, but I thought if you were also looking for what's normally inside of apartments, which would be a fitness center or something on top. So I understand what you're saying, that's completely separate.
Yeah, that's me separate, yeah.
And my other question, can I ask you another question?
Yeah, you asked all the questions you would like. There's two discussions.
The cottage retail area, I tried to go through all the different standards, and so I guess it's more, what are you trying to envision with it? Because I saw 30% brick, and then I saw you could have 50% mural in the front, you can have two full sides of murals in five primary colors. And so are you looking for a really eclectic, mismatched, all these different colors? Is that what you're going for, or is it just leaving it wide open?
I think, well, speaking from staff and not necessarily the designers or Sing, from staff, the proposal was received as something that's going to be very unique and very identifiable. And the approach, at least, I think, I'll speak for myself when I took the reviewing this, is that it allows a number of options that UDO does not intend to allow. And so it's got the, it's based more on allowing a lot of creativity with some, some standards, some guardrails, that's the word, without, you know, getting too into design right now with certain things. So the way the UDO currently, you know, reads for most developments, it's at least 75% brickstone and rock, it's this much windows, it's this, this, this. And those cottage retails are really going to be, again, I guess I already said it's unique and allow a lot of flexibility, and especially not just that one-time flexibility the first time they're built, but say a tenant moves in and out and wants some different facade design or signage or something like that.
Okay, that's more where I was going to. So they're not going to then first find a tenant, design the exterior of the cottage, you know, put a bunch of hot dogs painted all over it, you know, a little sign, and then that's going to be there forever. It's going to be pre-designed and some modifications for a tenant?
So I think I'm getting a little outside of my realm here. I directed more to Sing, but generally, I think the way I've understood Sing's intent is generally what you described, and the murals are allowed to allow for that change in feel of the building. So that more tenant-specific murals, I think, is something actually we talked about.
Okay.
And I would invite the Sing team, if you have anything to add, feel free to please come up to the microphone.
The other thing, I have one more, about bike racks. I'm not a biker, so I did see at some point in there, there were 10 racks, and I didn't know if that meant 10 of the metal, or there were 10 slots, or that, I saw that transportation was excellent, it was very detailed, very easy to understand, but at some point I just saw 10 bike racks, and that seemed kind of disconnected, and is that a good number? Was that open?
So the bike, yeah, it actually does, it comes across a little disconnect. So one of the, one of the portions that UDO allows for Sing to completely rewrite and complete other standards are parking and, well, bike parking specifically. And so what I believe they've done, and I'm remembering back on that section, is they've broken up bike parking so that there's dedicated spaces inside the building and outdoors. So in the inside, and it's not, I'm trying to describe this, what we talked about is sometimes in a more urbanist style, multi-family building with rapid parking, people that ride bikes, there's a certain spot of the garage where this, that's where the bikes happen to go and be locked up. This is going to be a little different than that, provide true, you know, indoor bike safe parking.
Ken?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think in general, I mean, I think this is going to be a really good addition, a thoughtful design, and welcome to the community. I do want to point out my typical trifecta of concerns when we add, you know, apartments to the town and those being, you know, schools, right? Do we have enough to handle folks? I think that while we don't influence that, it's something we should take into consideration and try to extend influence where we can, because it is a real problem. I think the second is around infrastructure, and, you know, are we growing our infrastructure to support new folks that are coming into the town is also important. The third, traffic and safety. I think we really need to be mindful as we grow, because the issues that are brought up are real, and we see those consistently. So if we're going to add more to Town Hall Drive, which gets congested, we need to be thoughtful about that. And two specific things, I think, to bring up now around the safety piece. As this gets built out with the fire station, right? There are times, even now on Town Hall Drive, where that gets so congested that if something were to happen, a truck can't pull out, right? If we're going to be adding all of this buildings and, you know, event space, I see that as a problem that is even more pronounced. So we may want to get ahead of that and see how we can navigate that. The second concern is around some of the cross streets. They are getting, even now, pretty dangerous. I mean, some of them were mentioned. You look at something as far up as Downing Glen. I mean, these are cut-through streets that get from one area down a church street, they're used, and people speed through them. These are places with pools and kids, and if we're going to do this, we should be mindful about how do we shore safety, whether that is a speed bumps or lights or stop signs. If we're going to build something for the community, we need to protect the community. So those are my three caveats. The only other thing, completely different as an aside, is the library. In this model, it kind of gets dwarfed with the buildings around that. Is there, you know, maybe a plan to expand that? I know the usage isn't there, but if we're going to bring all these people to that, maybe that's something to consider. But otherwise, looking good. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure they could span all of it. So with the schools, Wake County has a spreadsheet that tells us what demand is for apartments, do they not?
They have a...
Some sort of calculation, correct? And generally, while I understand that people see a lot of buildings, but most of the time apartments, aren't they been demonstrated to be less demanding schools? Just because you don't have as many people that are of school age kids, correct?
I need to look at, you know, I don't know.
I believe from past, that seems to have been what the consensus was. I mean, that you tend to have even more in like townhomes, have more kids than people in a school, I believe. I mean, I don't, I guess it'd be nice to get what the facts actually are, so we at least could be educated about that. Foxglove, so I know you're talking about as a sort of a event area there. Are they considering like putting bollards or anything, that sort of something, are we going to park a dump truck in front of it, we have an event? Or are we going to try to plan now where we can do it inexpensively and put bollards in?
I do not believe there will be a dump truck unless it's there for an event of its own. There are plans, so the thought behind this section of Foxglove is truly to have that event space, and that's why it's kind of on the inside of the park. There is, it might not be on this page itself, but there is places for removable bollards.
And I'm assuming this, now you're on this, this off-street parking, is that going to be where the farmer's market ends up going? I mean, we've sort of lost them in all this.
Yeah, it's, I don't know exactly on this where the farmer's market, it's going somewhere in here, yeah.
I mean, I know there was discussion before when this was less developed about it, it sort of, I just, you know, I mean, I feel like that's something that people appreciate having there, and I think it's kind of a symbiotic, you know, thing with some of the cottage retail or anything else. I mean, it would be, you know, nice that we continue to sort of consider them in the plan so that they weren't, you know...
Yeah, and I don't know exactly, but I know that somewhere in here.
Since we can't like Knightdale have the cool structure, I'd at least like to make sure that we have something set aside, you know, for that.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Todd Rankin, I'm with Sing Development, the Director of Architecture and Planning. Pleasure to meet you all, and thank you for listening. Chris Fabulous' job tonight, you kind of stole my thunder, I was going to get up here and walk through, but he's done a great job. So what I did want to expand on is what you're talking about with the farmer's market. So what we're doing is, we're going to be reworking some of that parking on the west side of the existing parking up along the town hall or the town offices there. So that off-street parking where the text is going vertical right there on the left in between, or on either side of the education garden. So with all of this, the education garden is going to be relocated into this area. And then that park space that is to the left of the education garden, south of the stage area, that is where we are planning what we are calling the Grove, and that's where the farmer's market would be, would be going. So we have a number of different layouts where we've looked at tents. The tents could be set up around that off-site or off-street parking that's kind of around the education garden, and then in also that park space or Grove area. And then just to let you know, we have had meetings, several meetings with the farmer's market group, and the last time that we showed them this concept, they were in full support of it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And I had another question, similar to what Chris was talking about in the cottage retail. You know, it talks about different things and the percentages. I mean, has there been any thought to like allowing container-type things in there? That seems to be a pretty popular thing now, and if you do it right, it looks kind of cool and sort of is a counterpoint to the other kind of architectural materials, but I don't see how that would necessarily be allowed.
Yeah, I don't think that's come up in discussion.
You're thinking like the box yard at RTP?
Well, like that, yeah. Or I've seen them before, there's like a hamburger place inside of the, you know, the container. You know, like I say, it's a, the harder materials, if you don't put them everywhere, can sort of play off the softer materials, like the wood and everything else, you know, in a way that I think tends to make people, you know, just add to that sort of eclectic nature of things or whatever. I like the fact they're trying to mix the materials like Chris was saying and trying to change that, but at any rate. So, yeah, that was, that's all the questions I had. Any other questions?
Okay.
Are there any public restrooms included?
That's a great question.
Yes, there would be public restrooms. We've sized those accordingly to this space here at the park, and they would be located on the backside of that stage area. So we've accounted for both men's, women's, families. So, yes, in that stage area, there's other things for storage for the education garden and mechanical, electrical for the stage and everything. So that's a little bit generic, just calling it stage, but yes, those are good restrooms there.
Michelle, would it be possible to consider, or think about making sure you have at least one smart shuttle stop within this development?
There is a provision within the document, I believe, that's looking at relocating that somewhere within the development.
Thank you.
Other questions? So, yes, I believe it would be smart to continue this unless, over any objections to next meeting, and then make sure we can get as many public comments as possible. Okay, so I think we can move on to staff comments. Thank you, Chris. That was a great presentation. Thank you. Thank you, everyone who gave a comment.
So to touch on what is the August and September newsletter, as we did cancel the last meeting, no new site plans were submitted that time, since that time. Affordable housing implementation does continue to be discussed by the town council. The incentive zoning policy was adopted, so that is something that is being used now in discussions with applicants to encourage additional affordable housing with development projects. However, discussions about a potential down payment assistance program are ongoing, and town council also selected three town-owned properties that we're evaluating the potential to partner with an agency to develop. So town council will be talking more about the down payment assistance and those three town-owned lots at their October 24th workshop. In regards to the mural program, I believe the Planning and Zoning Board probably recalls some UDO amendments related to... some UDO amendments related to mur- murals, um, that went through the process not long ago. Kind of in tandem with that, um, the town was looking at, um, properties that we could put murals on that our town owned. So three, um, properties were selected. Um, the former, uh, the Fire Admin Building is what we call it, the, the old fire station at Morrisville Cupperdine Road and fifty-four, um, M A F C and the, the restroom building, um, at Shiloh Park. Those were, um, selected as potential mural locations and we have an RFP out, uh, for murals in those locations. Responses are due October twentieth. Um, and those proposals are going to go through the Parks Recreation Cultural Resources Advisory Committee and then on to town council. Um, but looking forward to getting some murals up in town. Town Council, um, did also approve in September, um, the text amendments that the board reviewed related to EV charging. Um, so that, uh, furthers the town's sustainability, um, efforts and we're excited to see that. And then Crabtree Nature Park Site Plan, um, was approved. So that's like kind of an overview of, of the planning newsletter and the activity, um, in that realm. Um, I did have a couple other updates for the board as well. Um, first is a reminder that at your next meeting in November, um, you're scheduled to have a joint meeting with the town council. Um, so we are still working on the logistics for that meeting, um, but anticipate sometime to be set aside just to have a general conversation with town council. They're doing that with all of their advisory boards. Um, and then also did want to let the board know, um, that Josh Michael has resigned. Um, we have actually hired him on in the planning department. So one of the conditions of his employment was obviously that he needed to resign from this board. Sorry, we stole him from you. Um, but he does, um, have a degree and some experience in planning and, and we're excited to have him start with us. He'll, he'll be officially starting with the town on October sixteenth. And that's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. I guess it's time for board comments. Let's start with Tim this time.
I have to say, all of the work that Chris and the rest of the team did on the planning for this has just been phenomenal. It's so easy for us to go through and make some quick reviews, but my goodness, the hours played for this are amazing over the last, I don't know, two years, how long you've been doing it. So thank you so much for the time and effort.
I just wanted to again congratulate Michelle and Chris. Uh, council meeting, they received an award. I apologize for what was, for the efforts of the planning department staff. What was the name of the award?
Um, it was a proclamation for Community Planning Month. Um, October is National Community Planning Month. Um, so that proclamation did recognize the Planning and Zoning Board as well. And Commissioner Bain was there to be honored, um, and represented, um, the board that evening. But, um, I will echo that, that back to all of you, thanking you for all of the time and effort that you volunteer, um, to the community to help make Morrisville a better place.
Yeah, I'll echo the same thing. Great presentation. So thank you. And Josh, if you're listening, you'll be missed. So I believe that is it. Uh, do I have the motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.